Six thirty-five, we're going to call it order this January tenth, two thousand thirteen, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And we're doing things a little bit differently today. We're actually going to executive session first and then we're returning to open session to continue the meeting. So I'm going to propose a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto believing that having this discussion, open session, would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating body and reconvene in open session.
Second.
The motion been seconded. Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Cahane?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley, yes. We are in executive session. Okay, that sounds like about ten to me, doesn't it? Okay, all right, so we're going to open, we were in executive session, we've just returned to open session of the Board of Selectmen meeting for January tenth, two thousand thirteen. So I'll call a meeting to order and the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of December twentieth, two thousand twelve.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the Selectmen's meeting minutes of Thursday, December twentieth, two thousand and twelve.
Second to motion. Motion made, seconded any further discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor.
Aye.
Unanimous. Confirmation of future meeting dates. Right now, the only meeting date we have set is January twenty-fourth. Now, Dennis, you're going to be, you got a weird February, right?
Yeah, well, February fourteenth until the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so if we, one second, please. Twenty-fourth, so the first week in February would be our, or no, we'd do the second.
Yeah.
First and third, so that'd be seventh and the twenty-first. So are those okay for you, Dennis? Or are you going?
I'm back on the twenty, the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so you want to do the seventh and the twenty-eighth?
Sure.
That sound okay?
Okay.
Okay with everybody?
Yep.
I wouldn't be the same without you.
That's right here.
So meet February seventh and twenty-eighth?
Yeah. Okay, let's see. Item four on the agenda is citizens' speak. Do we have any citizens that wish to address the board? And we'll move on. Okay, item five on the agenda is to meet the new library director and I hope I don't put your name too bad. William?
Adam Sack.
Adam Sack? Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you.
So just wanted to come by, we've been taking Will around town, introducing him to different people in the town, and we wanted to make sure that we stopped by the Board of Selectmen and introduced him. So this is Will Adam Sack. He comes to us from Quincy where he was the Director of Circulation. He's a member of the Mass Library System Executive Board. He's also active, even before coming to Milton, active within the library network that we're a part of, the old Colony Library Network. He lives in Abington where he is an elected library trustee, so he comes with that experience as well, some experience in town government. And he's the, his selection really came at the end of a very competitive search process. I think you'll be happy to know that the position was very attractive, attracted a lot of candidates. People definitely saw Milton as a town they would like to work in and be part of. The library is seen as very successful by library professionals outside of Milton. They're very interested in the position, the new facility that we have, as well as, we learned through the interview process that the Milton Library is really seen as being very well supported by the people of Milton. So it made it a very attractive position for people in surrounding areas and even people from other states that applied. Will was the unanimous choice, the unanimous first choice of the search committee and after the recommendation from the search committee was unanimously approved by the trustees. So we're just thrilled to have him. We think he's a, as I said, a very competitive process where there's some strong competition and we, we think we're very lucky and very fortunate to have Will to help take the Milton Library to even higher heights.
Great. Thanks, Brendan. I'll just say a couple of words because after Brendan, anything I say won't make me sound quite as good. But I'm really excited to be starting. I've been in the position about a week and I could already tell, I knew ahead of time that there's good libraries and there's great libraries and the Milton Public Library is a great library. The reason it's a great library is it has a great staff, it has great support in the community, it has great friends, foundation, trustees groups that are really active and the library's really important to them. And I can already tell, and all the people I've met in the past week, that the library's really important in the community. And I want to make the Milton Public Library something that everybody in town wants to come to, everybody in town wants to use, and really to be the envy of other towns. And hopefully, over the next couple of months, couple of years, we'll start working towards that and we'll achieve our goals, all working together. And I just wanted to make myself available anytime you have any questions, anytime you want to come over for a tour of the building. I'd be more than happy to have you come over. I thank you for your time tonight.
And we're proud of our, the facility is beautiful over there and, you know, as a town, as Board of Selectmen, we're pretty proud of it. And, you know, I think we have a great library trustee staff and, you know, the, ever since the library's been renovated, you can just see by the, the lack of parking spaces out there now.
Yes, right, right, yes.
It's very successful.
There's not a quiet time, there's always people, always people using it.
Exactly, so, good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I just want to thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Roth, and the other library trustees and, great to have you onboard and I've noticed that your resume is extensive and I notice it involves youth, extensive youth work as well. And I was just recently a participant up at the library, I thought it was just a great Saturday program. They had young children reading to dogs.
Right.
And you could come in, the child could come in and they could bring their own doggy book.
Right.
Or they could pick a doggy book at the library.
Right.
Then go into a room with trained handlers, different kinds of dogs, little terriers or big German shepherds, very well trained, and the child would sit down and read to the dog who was being handled by their handler. And I just thought it was so creative and just a wonderful experience.
And it's a great program for, for dog lovers, but it's also a great program for kids who are a little bit shyer than other kids and don't want to read to other people, but they'll read to the dogs like it's nothing, you know, it's a great program.
My daughter who's in the second grade, she just came back from the library the other day. She had about seven or eight books on les loups, which is wolves.
Okay.
In French. And she was doing a report, she was, I used to think that a library, back when computers got popular, that they might tend to be outmoded.
Right.
It's almost like the opposite is true.
It has been.
It's a combination, like she came home with about six or seven books on wolves, able to see the pictures, able to read the writing, and then she was able to work on the computer. And I just think it was just a wonderful library and also, I've attended several meetings in the Keys Room, so it's a great community resource, too. Library trustees should be proud of themselves and it sounds to me like they got themselves a good new director.
I hope so and we're just going to keep trying to improve on, on what we already have.
Our Consolidated Facilities Director lives in Abington also.
That's great.
That's right, yep, met with him today.
Well, I can't beat a dog story, but.
What story do you have?
Reading to dogs.
It's true.
But I do know my, my three daughters, you know, they came along at a time when they were there every day. And one thing that makes me really happy about the library is actually who's running the library, the trustees, Brendan at the helm, is a great leader. And now that Frank is on there as well, I feel real secure that it's, it's going to be wonderful for the kids moving forward. And after reading your resume, I'm even more happy about it.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Okay, now to some exciting, item six on the agenda, the intermunicipal storm water agreement. And our EPW Director Joe Lynch is going to explain this thing to us.
That is definitely a tough act to follow. Stormwater, simply put, is Boston is a Phase One community, we're a Phase Two community. But as a Phase One community, Boston has been held to a higher standard than the Phase Two communities, as all Phase Ones have across the entire country. And the highest standard is that EPA conducted an audit already of the Boston facilities and noticed years ago that Boston isn't as compact as anybody would expect Milton to be, and it's obvious. What they have though is they have a DPW, they have the Water and Sewer Commission, they have Housing Authority, they have a redevelopment authority, they have a park commission, they have a convention commission, and all of those entities have stormwater systems that they, that they manage. So EPA said, you need to, Boston Water and Sewer as the lead agency, you need to establish interagency agreements with your own agencies to define how it is you're going to manage your stormwater. And while you're at it, you should probably do the same thing with all your neighboring communities. So Boston Water and Sewer looked to all the neighboring communities, including Milton, and has asked to participate in a coordination, in a cooperation effort of understanding where our systems connect and how we affect each other. And quite frankly, it seemed quite onerous when it first was offered in April, but the reality is it affects only the area from Truman Highway and Brush Hill Road, the triangle extending out along the ridge line of Brush Hill down to Paul's Bridge, and just those neighborhoods connecting Walcott, Cushing, Dana, Metropolitan, you know, Beacon Hill, and just, just, just those streets. And it's no industry and no commercial, it's pure residential, so though it would seem onerous, in reality, it isn't.
So essentially what it does is if we're going to be doing any projects there or anything, we have to give them a heads up, basically, that?
And they us, and more importantly, if there was any release of a pollutant that would find its way into the, into the stormwater system, if an oil truck broke down and had a leak and it was at the crest of the hill and even though it's our system, it may connect into a piece of their system, is to smoke those issues out ahead of time and identify those.
So they can react as well.
So when an incident happens, they can react quickly.
Okay.
Okay.
So it doesn't require us to do anything more?
Coordinate and cooperate. And there's an escape mechanism and there's actually a proviso in the draft agreement developed by their chief council that doesn't obligate the town to appropriate any money.
Okay.
But if we were to change the way we appropriate our stormwater money, we just have to give them thirty-day notice and allows us to make that change.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess the recommendation would be to authorize the Director of Public Works to enter into the intermunicipal agreement with the Boston Water and Sewer Commission contingent upon the review as to form and content by Milton's Town Council.
Okay, and Joe, would it incorporate the Lower Mill section?
No. Well, if there were connections, it would, but Boston connects directly into the Napolit and we connect directly into the Napolit and there's no connection between the systems.
Got you.
So everything along the Napolit, along the town line, city line, if you will, all the way up to Mattapan Square, there is no interconnection. When you get to the Parkway, it's the DCR's MS four, it's their stormwater system, not ours. So then.
So where's our water going right now, our stormwater? Most of, a lot of it in the Napolit.
Going directly to the Napolit. Most of ours in town hit Pine Tree Brook and Unc Woody Brook and there's a separate Brook system, most, all of it piped nowadays over in East Milton, but it all ends up in the Napolit. Unc Woody ultimately ends up in Golive's Creek down by California and Squanum, as does East Milton, ends up over in Golive's Creek at the same location, and then over by the Legion Building. And everything else that we have pretty much goes to Pine Tree Brook and out to the Napolit where it joins down to the Central Ave.
I'm missing something, so are we talking about connecting Boston pipes and Milton pipes for the stormwater?
No, these are pipes that are already connected.
Yeah.
In those isolated areas along the ridge line.
Right.
Above Brush Hill Road. There are some isolated areas where those pipes are in fact connected. It's coordinating responses to those areas and only those areas, nowhere else.
So in certain places, we have flowed into theirs and other places, they have flowed into ours.
That's correct.
Okay.
And in many of those areas, they're totally isolated, they don't connect at all.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But what EPA has asked Boston Water and Sewer to do is to understand that and to plan with their neighboring communities to know what those connections are.
Oh, I see, okay.
Before we actually vote this motion to, I asked Joe to research, it was an interesting court case that has a little bit to do with, well, a lot to do with stormwater, a little bit to do with this. The state of Virginia, I guess Virginia's Commonwealth, too, isn't it?
Commonwealth.
Actually sued EPA, brought them to federal court and just won the lawsuit. And the gist of the lawsuit was that stormwater is not a pollutant in and of itself and EPA does not have the right to treat stormwater as if it were a pollutant. The pollutant is the stuff that's inside the water, in other words, what's getting carried by the water, not the water itself. And EPA was apparently in Virginia writing some onerous regulations for them to treat this stormwater. And the gist of it, if I'm correct, is they came down saying that you, you can write regulations to attack the pollutant, but you can't write regulations to basically manage clean water.
Very items that the Act is intended to protect to begin with, so.
Right.
How can it be a pollutant was the, was the court conclusion.
So it's something, and according to Joe, it doesn't affect us very much at all at this point because we don't have those onerous regulations in place at this point, but it's something to kind of keep on the burner and kind of, kind of keep a watch on.
Right.
But it was an interesting case.
It was interesting from two perspectives, really. One is that, you know, that a state agency, Attorney General, with the Department of Transportation would go after EPA and more important, that they filed it in July and the decision was printed last week. And so a lot of those difficult states' rights issue cases languish forever.
Right.
And the thing moved through about as fast as you can imagine, so it really kind of set the tone that the courts, the federal courts, are really kind of watching the EPA.
Hmm.
So I guess that, that's the takeaway that I got is that, you know, some of the onerous things that we fear, I think we probably have a little more comfort now that they might be holding those in check.
Because EPA really is, and it's one of the biggest sources outside of the schools of unfunded mandates. There are huge unfunded mandates within the EPA regulations.
From the gas pump to the car that you drive, to the air that you breathe and everything you buy that has all various taxes assigned to it through, and it all comes out of the Clean Air Act and the Clean Water Act. And so we.
And it affects our DPW as well in terms of the things we have to do.
Absolutely.
You know, in part, the half million dollars we spend every year on, on the service drains is, is unfunded EPA-driven. So, and, you know, not that it's a bad thing, it's just that, you know, it's, paying the bill is coming on our backs, not their backs.
Right. They told us to, gave us the money, I don't think we'd complain.
Right, right, exactly. So, other than that, we do have a motion.
Well, actually, I just recommended one on.
Yeah. Well, has, has Town Council actually read this and agreed with it?
He has read it and I believe he's got comments coming.
Okay.
Mostly editorial, you know, form and content, nothing that's going to change the scope.
Okay, so to approve, the, the motion is to approve, subject to Town Council's recommendation and authorize the Public Works Director to sign an agreement between the town, Public Works Department, and the Boston Water and Sewer Commission to coordinate efforts with respect to pollution prevention as specified in this agreement to be effective through December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Second to motion.
Motion made, seconded any further discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Dennis. The next one's not been read?
Nope, not, a few more down.
Hold on, please.
Okay, item seven is the annual report of the Youth Counselor Emeritus, Vicki McCarthy. Hi, Vicki.
Hello.
Very good, how are you doing?
Good, thank you.
I do.
How are you doing?
Good.
Hi.
And I looked at your report, you've got all kinds of things you did last year.
Yes, you know, it's kind of like continuing the job, but I love it. So it's really, it's been a great year and as I said, having the goal of having Chris Heron come to town got accomplished. And my only regret, as I said in the report, was that it was the same night as the Board of Selectmen. Originally, it was going to be the same night as the special town meeting and so you didn't get a chance to go, but we had almost three hundred people up at the high school auditorium, which is amazing because you might remember the times when we would have meetings on substance abuse and we'd get twenty-five, we'd have more people on the stage than in the audience. And so to have almost three hundred people, it was almost like a town meeting, which is what we had planned, so. And caduceus to Caroline Cancela, our public health nurse, because the Board of Health took the Stamps a Grant that we had gotten in the past and was able to offer that to the community. And we worked with the adjustment counselor at the high school and, and then, of course, he presented at the high school the following day. All of the kids at the high school got to see him and I'm on the Health and Wellness Subcommittee of the School Committee and everybody raved about it. They said it was really one of the best.
I know we had a discussion, we happened to be at a social event, we had a discussion about, there used to be a drug awareness night for the sports team.
Yes, that's right.
And a conversation about trying to reinstate that because we didn't realize that it didn't happen any longer. Now, has there been any success on that?
Well, actually, the superintendent was saying her only regret was that she didn't mandate for the athletes and their parents to come to that town hall meeting event. There's been some discussion because, you know, I think Assistant Superintendent John Fallon felt, well, you know, we have a lot of other kids other than the athletes, so they're having the discussion and I.
Right.
I know, you know, the superintendent would like to see something come back, so maybe because the MIAA does really strongly recommend those kinds of events, maybe it will come back.
And it's kind of a carrot stick approach, at least with the athletes, that you want to play sports.
That's right, yes.
You come to this thing.
Yes, yeah. So, so that was, you know, we were happy about that. And actually, tonight, I was hoping that I was going to have with me Father Mark Murphy from St. Agatha, the youngest priest in the Archdiocese. And the other day, I was down at St. Agatha's and he, he noticed that I had something from the Health and Wellness Committee of the School Committee. He said, are you on the School Committee? I said, no, the Health and Wellness Subcommittee. He said, and I said, something was mentioned about the Selectmen. He said, I've been in town almost, over a year and I haven't met the Selectmen yet. So I said, would you like to come tonight? And actually, tonight, they're having a young adult event and Father Murphy is at it. Ken Carberry is playing, I don't know what he plays, but apparently he's into the music thing. And they were having an event for young adults, kids home on their college break and others, anybody, any of the young adults in Milton were invited, so I'm anxious to see. He said, otherwise, I'd be there. And I said, well, I'll send your greetings and he'd like to come in at some point to say hello.
Love to meet him.
Yeah, so that would be great. And in terms of this upcoming year, you might know that the Board of Health did receive a small grant from Milton Hospital to do compliance checks on tobacco, which is something they hadn't been able to do because of some lacking of funding. So the Board of Health did apply for one of the mini-grants from Milton Hospital this year and received it. And then in talking to Caroline earlier, apparently the state did come through and actually, when I looked at the letter that was sent from the state, Jeff Wilkinson, a Milton resident, signed it, the state did give some money and so the Board of Health did have one tobacco compliance check back in October, I think. She said, of the ten establishments here in Milton that sell tobacco, four sold to a minor. So there's some education that needs to happen. That's the problem, when you don't have these all the time, retailers get lax and so there will be another one coming up, thanks to Milton Hospital for giving us that mini-grant. The other thing is.
Is there any enforcement that happens once that those?
Well, they get fined, those four, and get a warning. And then there is, I'd have to check with the Board of Health, but they, there is some sort of a, the second time, I think the, the penalty is higher.
Yeah, I know ultimately they can rescind their right to sell.
That's right, yes. I think on the third, maybe the third offense. So, you know, I'm glad that we're able to do that again. And the other thing I mentioned in the report about interagency council of the South Shore and I was saying to our new library director when we were waiting, now that Milton Library is hosting it, because we used to meet at the Quincy Medical Center, but now that Stuart took over, they were thinking of turning their conference center into offices, so we were getting kicked out. And so Milton Library is allowing us to have the meetings there and everybody that comes from the surrounding communities said, you know, when can we come back? It's a beautiful facility and somebody mentioned that Keys Conference Room.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we get, we have a small cater, catering thing from the Common Market or Fish and Chicken and of course Greg McDonald's, a Milton resident, and so it's a nice connection to have all that linked up. So we'll be meeting there next week and the topic is hoarding, which tends to be a, a big problem in all the communities. We have a lot of public health people from surrounding communities coming to listen to an expert in the field, some kind of a primer on hoarding. And I know, I don't know, I noticed the chief back here, do you know if the district attorneys, they had a conference on hoarding and they were supposed to get manuals to all the police departments?
Oh, yeah, they have two manuals.
You have them, oh, okay. So hopefully, we can get some coordination on that whole thing. Sandra Hedges, who's a licensed clinical social worker, geriatric care manager from Overlook, is going to be coming to speak, so I'll just pass that around in case anybody's interested. And one of the things that we had, other than Senator Keenan, who I mentioned in the report, we had the Waymouth Youth Coalition Substance Abuse Prevention Team come to the library. And they did a documentary on opiate overdose work because all of the communities are really in bad shape. Norfolk County has a huge opiate addiction problem and people stayed in that Keys Conference Room for the whole two hours. Sometimes people have to get back because they're on their lunch hour, but Waymouth gave us a CD of the award-winning documentary and Caroline Cancela's bringing it up to the Board of Health next Monday to see if we can run it on cable here in Milton because tremendous, it shows how a community bands together and deals with the issue and so I have the CD here, I'm going to return it to Caroline and hopefully, we'll be having it. It's, it was produced by the Waymouth Educational Television, you know, their public television program. So I.
Do you have any statistic on overdose in, in Milton?
Well, the chief might.
I do.
Yes, and do you see it as a problem here?
Probably, it's a regional problem.
Yes, yes.
It's a regional.
Yes, and I'll tell you, well, as you probably know, Quincy Police Department's one of the first police departments in the state to carry Narcan in their cruisers. They saved a hundred people this last year in Quincy.
They carry what?
They saved a hundred people.
Oh, but they carry what?
Oh, Narcan, which is the, it stops the overdose. So they're leaders and I've, I've mentioned Impact Quincy in my report, which is, you know, another one of the groups that I'm part of the advisory council for. We have a, a meeting coming up next week, our past meeting, they did Community Hero Awards and the Community Policing Unit at Quincy Police Department got an award. And then, is it Lieutenant Patrick Lynn, who is big drug unit, and he got a national award, I think, recently because of the work they've been doing. And a number of other people. Actually, this Waymouth group got an award, too. This was the first time they went outside of Quincy to award, so it's really nice and actually Quincy has a documentary as well, different, a little bit different approach. And actually, it was a Milton resident who is the chair of that Impact Quincy, Kio, Arthur Kio, who's been doing work in this area for a long time. So, you know, there's a lot of great interconnections from all of these different organizations, so the work is there and, but I know the, you know, Dennis, that the, the schools were concerned because I know we've. We lost a young man this year. And I know that the Assistant Superintendent was at the wake and he said, you know, I saw other Milton parents that are, what can we do and we know that the schools can't do everything. But again, Richard, as you said, it's a regional, it's, you know, Norfolk County, you know, the statistics are, you know, up there, which is. the statistics are, you know, up there, which is really concerning.
Yeah, I commend you and really appreciate your efforts. I mean, as I look at the youth, they have tremendous opportunities in the town for sports, be that lacrosse, or softball, baseball, hockey, the whole nine yards are available to our youth in terms of sports. On the other hand, and I think that we're sort of typical, in recent years, because of budget constraints, a town like Milton eliminated its full-time youth coordinator, as did Randolph and so on. So, there is a bit of a void there. And anything, I feel that in terms of grants, the health, yourself, in dealing with a child's socio-emotional aspect, that that's an area that continues to need attention.
You're right, and it's interesting because just this morning, as I mentioned, last year, I started the year with a seven AM morning meeting for the Milton Site Council. Well, this morning, at seven AM, I was up at Milton High, and James Jett is our new principal there. And he brought that up. He said to me, "Do you know of any resources?" So, I'm connecting him to, through Bay State Community Services in Quincy. And actually, the prevention director of that is a Milton resident, Bill Spinks. So, we have a lot of connections there. There is a program that we can offer, you know, there's some restrictions. It's usually low income that are eligible for a lot of these services, but it's getting the word out there and making the connections. So, you know, that is something that is, something that the principal has asked for. So, I'll be happy to make whatever connections I can through these different things. So, I've been sending out emails and seeing what connections we can make.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Oh, sure. I'm happy to do it. Yes. Oh, and I want to give a shout out to Lieutenant Kevin Foley and Officer Jay, Jason, somebody help me, of course, Richard walked out, right? Jay Conklin. Because as I mentioned in December, I was asked to advocate for one of our ninth graders up at the high school. And of course, Kevin is always extremely helpful in making those connections. And Jay called me back and helped make connections for this kid. And so, you know, I want to say, I want to let you know that Lieutenant Foley is a great asset to this community. And Jay Conklin is one of the younger patrolmen, was right there to say, you know, "Let me know how I can help," you know? So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Good to see you.
Okay, before we go to item nine, I was supposed to read this at the beginning of the meeting, and I forgot to, so shall I read it now? It's a little late, but I've been asked by MPEG to state that there's a planning board meeting tonight, and that's being broadcast live tonight on Comcast Channel 11 and on RCN Channel 13. So, I guess there's kind of a simulcast, ours is on the regular channel, and the planning board is on Channel 11. So, I did that. So, now, item nine on the agenda is a discussion of East Milton Square Slip Lane and aesthetics. And there's Chief Wells, Joe Lynch, and Bill Clark are going to join us to discuss the appearance of the slip lane. But I guess
Come on, let's go.
It's not about the appearance of the slip lane, it's whether we can do a test of lack of a slip lane or closure of the slip lane. More the issue, right?
Yes. We actually have a recommendation, a traffic commission recommendation.
It was after that, the rich.
Do you want me to take it, chief?
You can go first, Joe.
Sure. We've all been, we and the traffic commission have all been looking at the various things that we can do to advance the design criteria on this project at the deck, and mostly with regards to the traffic patterns and, you know, what works, what doesn't work, what might be problematic, and try to smoke those things out so when an RFP for Engineering Services goes out, it can be as comprehensive as possible. Therefore, we get a better designed product, therefore, we get a, you know, significant piece of infrastructure that should last, you know, fifty, hundred years or more. So, we've done an awful lot of experimentation down there, changing of timing, changing of traffic patterns, closures of roadway sections, most dramatic. And one of the things we were also asked to look at is consider the closure of the slip lane, which if people are eastbound from Adams Street heading towards Quincy, if you will, if they say in that left-hand lane, they can slip over and get onto Granite Ave northbound, and that's the area we're talking about. And everybody at the table knows it, people at home probably don't. So, that's the issue. And the thought was, in the longer term, to consider closing of that slip lane, and by doing so, to be able to add a little more parking, significantly more parking, and add some more green space, and eliminate some traffic conflict, confusion and conflict that may exist coming out of that slip lane onto Granite by Bruges Bagels and Fitness Unlimited in that area. So, the thought was to close it, do an experiment, see how it works. Well, with all the work that was going on with Massey OT's project, the bridge closures down there, we had an opportunity to be down in that area, looking at a lot of things throughout the summer. And what became dramatically clear is that the slip lane, besides the cars moving in, is the lane that most of the larger trucks are using to get onto Granite Ave northbound. If those, if that lane was closed and those vehicles needed to venture around the square, around the deck, and get up to Granite Ave northbound, we saw, I saw, just through observation, a conflict that these trucks are just too big and wouldn't be able to negotiate those turns with the multiple lanes and the tightness of the crossing. So, we did, and I apologize for the format, we've, the entire town's had a computer network problem for two days now, so I was unable to reproduce these for you people. But we did turning, it's also very boring stuff. We did a turning lane analysis. We looked at, cars can do it no problem. We looked at buses, we looked at box trucks, and we looked at tractor trailers. Box trucks, anything that's, you know, with a fixed chassis, all the way up to a ten-wheeler, all the way down to, you know, the small delivery trucks, not, you know, bigger than vans, but, you know, but not as big as a tractor trailer. For all three classes of those vehicles, they cannot negotiate the left-hand turn from Bryant onto Bolivard, nor can they make the turn from Bolivard onto Granite without crossing over lanes and crossing between lanes. In doing so, if they were to come from Bryant and make that turn, crossing lanes and getting hung up at a red light, they'd be diagonal, creating gridlock, stacking all the way up. So, the recommendations, the traffic commission about a month ago, through engineering staff, John Thompson and myself, who are also members of the commission, was, out of all the things we'd like to test and experiment with, this one's playing with fire. You can't do it, it will fail. The trucks are doing it now, the ones who are coming down from Edgell, and needing to make that left-hand turn onto Granite, bad enough. But if we now send everything from Adams, it would be gridlock. So, it's a test doomed for failure. Now, that's not to say that that precludes closure of the slip lane in the long run. What it simply says that, when the design consultant is hired, and if the town's intention is to go to hybrid B, closure of the slip lane, then some emphasis of analysis and some emphasis of design needs to be done on Bolivard to widen it, to make that turn maneuverable.
We also think to do that will cost you money.
Okay.
It's not going to be easy. It's not going to be something easy to do.
Yeah, I mean, again, it depends what the money is. I mean, obviously, you know, we only have a limited amount of money for the whole project, but if we can get it done within the money that we have, I think it probably does make sense. I think in the end, if we can get traffic flowing around, it will make traffic pattern better than having that traffic come across the slip lane. Because I think that does tend to impede traffic.
The conflict coming out of the slip lane is real. It's a very real conflict.
Yeah.
There's a lot happening there. There's pedestrian movements that are happening in three different locations in that section of block.
Right, and it exacerbates Granite Ave, the traffic coming northbound at Granite Ave.
It's a consideration that needs to be analyzed and designed by the pro, but to test it, given the configuration that's out there now, is not possible.
Okay.
But you don't want the consequences.
Yes, and there had to be a reason why they put it there when they originally designed the square. And it remained there even after the deck was originally built. It's always remained in place there. So, there had to be some analysis to support why they did that.
Yeah, I mean, there could well be, I don't know. I mean, something was put there in the fifties, though, so I don't know how much analysis they actually did in the fifties.
I have a file from the DPW, it's about yeet thick, but I'm not through that whole thing. So, it might be down in the bottom, but I haven't found it yet. But I'm sure there's something.
Yeah.
I did find one of the pictures just before they turned the expressway on, showing that slip lane. And they hadn't filled in the piece
Right.
that's beside it, so. But we have, we have the images going back to the mid-fifties before they turned it on.
Right. And it certainly made more sense when you had traffic coming, you know, up Adams Street, you know, up Adams Street, you know, I guess that's, is that southbound on Adams?
You mean
East or west? Yeah, going towards Quincy. Before we close that off, if you, you know, try to bring traffic around that way, you, you know, because there's an extra light cycle that we're able to get rid of because of the closure, so.
You wouldn't have been able to take a left from Adams onto Granite.
Right, yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Without the slip lane.
Without the slip lane.
Because of the alignment.
Right.
Yeah, so that kind of allowed you to do that, and now we have a way to do that, so.
Turning movement analyses were done even in the fifties. It was actually, even the Egyptians knew how the turning movement is, getting the stones up the right way to get them up the pyramids.
Right.
They did that by testing and analyzing, more than analysis. But yeah, these templates are pretty age-old. We have the ability to do them computerized now, but it's basic geometry principles, though.
All right, so we're going to kind of backburner that, we're not going to do the test.
We actually have, there's a formal recommendation in the traffic commission
Okay.
report to you.
I went to the traffic commission meeting, I think, December 11th, and I went in there with the feeling that in terms of the hybrid and trying out the slip lane, I went in there with the feeling of, why not try it? I left there and I didn't feel that way anymore. I felt that there was sufficient discussion and evidence, such as the photos, that indicated that if you try it, we got proof that it's not going to work. So, you don't want to try something that doesn't work. And then, also, I've got a concern about the wheels of government and the slow movement of government. And sometimes, I think if you say, "Well, I think I want this," or "I think I want that," you're just dilly-dallying and you're not making progress. Down in East Milton Square, it's time to make progress. Is it the recommendation of the traffic commission that the selectmen support Hybrid Plan A?
I would say, I would say support Hybrid Plan A when you put the QL for design consultants. They, I mean, B, I'm sorry, to eliminate the slip lane, I think they need to tell us what it would take to make it maneuverable and what the impact is on the design, these conceptual design we have. If it's doable and we can make the trucks move through, I think the benefits that, my personal opinion, the benefits that we're getting on the deck itself are worth it. The cost is unknown, it could be astronomical, and that may drive the decision in a different way. So, I think the selectmen's goal was an adequate, was a proper one. The preferable is B, if it can be done. And if it can't be, we still want A.
Right.
Is that correct?
I would say that's true.
So, is that where we're at?
I think that's where we're at, yes.
B is eliminating the slip lane.
B is eliminating.
B eliminates the slip lane. But if it's not possible, we still want the design keeping the slip lane.
We're still going to look at it. We're going to have the design engineer look at it, but it's not, it's not a major component of the project. They're going to load the project into their computer, you know, look at it, tell us, does it work, doesn't it work? And if it's going to be a very cost-expensive item, then we probably don't want it. If it's going to be a very minimal cost, do it, look at it, tell us why it won't work because people do have questions, people still want to see the slip lane taken away. You know, we want to be able to balance out the cost-benefit analysis. Give it to us, what is it? Are we going to get more parking spaces?
Who wants it removed, though? That's my big concern is, and I just, I'm glad that we, that this board decided to see the A or B, because it took away, it took away the stall. Like, what's, I still am convinced that in the end, that slip lane is going to stay.
I mean, maybe it will. The problems I see with it, first of all, is, and it's real because I've seen it happen, that when you go across that slip lane, you have to be looking back constantly because you never know when cars are coming, and you cannot see people in the crosswalk.
And that crosswalk may go there. I don't know, that may get moved. I agree with all that.
Crosswalks are all going to move.
I know, yeah. I mean, that's a good idea, too. I really do. I think that's a good idea.
And I honestly think, and I've seen it happen, it impedes traffic on Granite Ave. It does, it absolutely does.
It's because I think, the other issue is too, is that the way that A, the way that B is designed now with the slip lane closed, there's too much temptation for violation using that shot, because there's still a straight, it's not a slip lane.
If you cut through the parking lot.
There's a cut through. And that is an issue because we know from a policing perspective, that every day, not every day, any day, that something occurs, either northbound or southbound, on 93, creates a hiccup effect for us in the square. It just bubbles up. And so, people are going to, for the same reason that today, we had to put that sign value back, is that turn right on Red at Granite Adams, if they can just right through it, they're going to do it. So, I think that is the only, the biggest thing that, from my perspective as chair, looking at this, is that we really need to give some thought to removing that.
Well, I mean, there may be other things you can do to
Right, I agree. And who knows what the design engineer will come out with in the end? I agree with Bill that I think the crosswalks are going to move. That crosswalk that is in front of Bruges was a late, by itself standalone project. I see that easily, I don't like it anyway, it's not safe, it's just not.
Right, it's not, it's absolutely not. But that aside, like I said, the benefits obviously are getting more parking, bigger park. And secondly, I think if all the, if it's designed properly, better traffic flow, that it will come around, if trucks can make that corner properly, that basically, you just have a rotary.
But it really will necessitate that the cure is to widen Bolivard.
Right, and like you say, it may be cost prohibitive, if it is, it is.
But I think it's physically possible, analysis will tell them that, and it boils right down to cost. I think, like Bill said, I think for a design consultant, that's a very simple and immediate undertaking that they can report back very early in the design development.
Yeah, right, and if it is, then we switch to, we switch to A.
I think that as a community, and I know that there are thoughts on so many sides, and having grown up and walked to school for that, I just think that is, from a community perspective, is really an opportunity for us to really enhance East Milton Square and make this deck, not just the parking, not just the amenability of parking, but to really make it as much as a part of this community, a jewel of this community
Yes.
as this gazebo is out front.
Yes.
I think we really have a chance to do that. And I think that when the, with the opportunity there, that we should embrace this and move it forward, not let it languish any further.
I agree, absolutely agree. That being said, you did make a little mention of it, and we probably should talk about that, too, that I got another call this week, I don't know if you saw the email as well, but from a resident complaining about the right turn on Red at Adams and Granite, that mainly, people don't stop. And the placement of the crosswalk is incorrect, basically. So, people get, people don't necessarily see people in the crosswalk, and then all of a sudden, they make the turn, boom, there's somebody in the crosswalk. So, it's, we, at our core team meeting, we talked about At our core team meeting, we talked about, well, should we have, switch it back to, at least until we do all the improvements, no right on red for the time being. You know, so switch it back to no right on red. I know the sign that went up is just stop before.
I haven't seen the message.
It says...
I put it...
You haven't seen the message?
I haven't seen the message.
We put a notice on our Facebook, and we put it on our website as an advance warning. We bagged the no right turn red sign yesterday immediately. We bagged it, that was Tuesday. We had it covered up by the end of the day, Tuesday.
Why?
The right turn on red.
Yeah.
No one stops.
Nobody is stopping, and the pedestrian call button that comes across at that crosswalk area, you press it, and it calls safe to walk. And you encounter, you're getting into that crosswalk, and those, even though it's stop, right-hand turn after stop, nobody's stopping. They're turning the corner rapidly and encountering pedestrians in that crosswalk repeatedly.
Do you think we should make a mo... We're all here right now, should, do you think we should make a motion to have this board take a vote tonight to reinstall a no turn on red there? And that's really the safest, if we know the danger exists, and we know how much foot traffic exists at that intersection...
There was...
Maybe that's what it should be.
There was no turn on red previously. And I think what we've done at the deck, everything, it's still being done under experimental regulation.
Right, yes, it is.
So I think it's to suspend the right-hand turn part of the experimental regulation.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying, at least until we make all the improvements, and then we can re-experiment with it after the crosswalks are properly placed and everything else. Because I think it does work, it does help flow of traffic on Adams Street without question. We don't want to get anybody killed in the process.
Exactly right, and endanger pedestrians. So either it's, according to chapter 9, either we have a turn on red or a no turn on red. There's no in-between, so we have to, I think, make a decision. Do we go back to no turn on red, have this board voted and re-erect it? I think that...
That's kind of what we're discussing right now.
And that's what we need to do, there's no in-between here.
Reason why it was added in, just so it is clear, I think I heard it said not too long ago, was traffic was stacking up on Adams Street into Quincy. But at the time it was happening, the gas company was doing some main, some gas main replacement work in Adams and Milton, and they were doing work in Quincy as well as Quincy's water department had a contractor. So there was a lot of construction conflict happening as well. Adams Street is not stacking up to the point of failure. So the fact that the construction's gone away and that those projects are completed, I think it's taken a lot of burden off of the congestion that caused the consideration to allow the right turn to begin with.
Right, right. And we do have to be careful, if you start stacking traffic up close to Granite Place...
They're going to start turning down.
You're going to shoot more traffic. It's going to make Governor's Road look like a cow path.
Fair warning, and if we eliminate this, if we eliminate the right turn allowance, and it does in fact back up, the only other cure, short of putting the right turn back in, is to adjust the timing, and where the timing will come out of is Granite Avenue northbound.
Yeah, I know.
Which is something that is also getting pressure, you know, on the town.
Yeah.
So the timing that you would add back on to clear Adams more rapidly has to come from that other segment.
I think the fact that we know this exists, though, and going back to what the chair said, the possibility that we know a pedestrian could be in the middle of that crosswalk crossing and get run over because we know that this right on red is not working. And I think it's incumbent that I make a recommendation right now that we replace Granite Avenue and Adams Street, that no turn on red be put back, be erected.
Until such time as...
Until such time, yeah.
...road improvements can be made to make it safe. Does everybody agree with that, or...
I'll make that in the form of a motion, is that all right with you?
I can certainly say so.
I don't know.
But, or I can make the motion, but I guess the... So, yeah, I'll make that motion, and I'll throw it up for discussion if somebody's going to second it.
You want to make it?
Yeah, I just did.
Oh, you did, okay. All right, we second the motion.
So any discussion on it, or...
Discussion, and it's not specific to the motion, but right nearby with your crosswalk, your pedestrian. When I've used that the last time was at the Christmas Stroll. I find that the wait time is not pedestrian-friendly to meet a cross.
It's not, because the whole...
And it's like...
Exactly right, the whole system's old.
Some other, it was like two kids and a lady, we're at the light with me. You press the light, and it's wait, 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 wait.
That's correct. See, um...
Dangerously wait.
Each of those intersections are timed unto themselves, and they're not, well, they need to be linked in order to get it to tie together. You can't have it allow a pedestrian out if Granite Avenue is coming northbound full blast, and you can't have it allow a passing cross if Adams Street is allowed to pass through to the right. So you literally are waiting for sixty seconds, sixty-five seconds, for that full cycle to clear before you get the clearance. And at that point, it's red at the fire station, it's red at Adams Street, and all that's open is Boulevard allowing you to move towards Quincy.
You know, one thing that will probably help there, too, when we finally do things, is like Quincy's installing, and a lot of towns, when you have a crosswalk, you know, when somebody pushes the crosswalk button, you get that beeping that...
Cambridge has it, I like it, Randolph has it.
Unless you got your car radio up full blast, you're probably going to hear it.
I didn't mean a motion either, I meant a recommendation, I used the wrong word.
He did, Rose is going to say it.
I didn't mean a motion.
That's all right, it sounds good to me, sorry.
No, I meant a recommendation, I must, as a recommendation to the Traffic Commission to the board.
Is this recommendation because of complaints you got, or because of something you witnessed?
It's both, yeah. I mean, Richard's already come to us before and said that he believes it's dangerous. I've had more than one person complain about it.
The crosswalk right there.
Yeah, that people just don't stop. I mean, not that they'll necessarily stop when we make improvements, I mean, you know, some of the, at some point in time, they have to be enforcement to, you know, just get people to obey the law, but, you know...
You want to do that only because we're going, if you don't, then we'll just, we'll go back, next Traffic Commission meeting, bring this up, vote it, come back, make a recommendation, it's just...
Right, so we may as well just get it done now.
Try to save two months.
Yeah, try to save two months.
So basically, the motion is to suspend the test of the allowing a right turn on red at the corner of Adams and Granite Avenue until such time as proper road improvements can be made to make such a design safe. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. I think you'd be happy with that one, that's a good one.
Okay, we've got a bunch of Traffic Commission recommendations. First ones are install do not enter Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on Rockwell Avenue at the intersection of Beale Street. So basically, that's, yeah, the part of Beale Street that's still Quincy, that's Milton.
Just to give you a quick brief, so we've realized that Quincy has done this on every street on Beale coming up from Austin to alleviate cut-through traffic into their neighborhoods heading northbound in the morning. So that left two streets remaining, Rockwell Place, Rockwell and Eaton being the two streets that are in Milton. So basically, what they were getting is they're now getting the brunt of it all. What was spread over six or seven streets is now being dispersed on theirs. So we think that this somehow may help that some of the cut-through traffic, which, as you all know, bleeds into that Crane Park, Brackett Street, Granite Place.
Yeah, and it kind of snakes its way around the square and back out.
It now forces them to have to stay on Beale to Adams Street.
Yeah.
I think this is a great idea, may stop the cars from Brackett Street.
They actually were present at the meeting when we took this vote.
That's what we did.
We were talking about Brackett, and we said the solution wasn't there, the solution needed to be at the head of the problem.
Absolutely, yes, great idea.
And similarly, do the same thing on Easton Street, 7 to 9, Monday through Friday. Do not enter, and that's for a 30-day trial period. So that would be the motion, is to amend Article II, Section 8, for a 30-day trial period as follows. Install do not enter, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., Monday through Friday. Sign on Rockwell Ave. at the intersection of Beale Street. And install do not enter, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., Monday through Friday. Sign on Easton Street at the intersection of Beale Street.
Second motion.
I'm going to second any further discussion, seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, the second one we have is to install a do not enter, 7 to 9, Monday through Friday, at Fairfax Road at the intersection of Brook Road. And then we've got install two caution children signs on Governor's Road, one 200 feet from the Quincy Town Line, one 200 feet from the intersection of Edgehill Road. Install a slow, hearing impaired child sign contingent upon the receipt of documentation from a resident with stipulation the sign be removed if the resident relocates. And install a caution blind person sign, again, contingent upon the receipt of documentation from the resident with the stipulation the sign will be removed if the resident relocates.
Second that motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, there's like four recommendations here. We identify Fairfax Road, we identify Governor's Road. I'm wondering if the last two, if we should identify the street. Like, next to the last one is Waldeck Road, and then the last one is Alvin Avenue.
That's fine with me. Okay, well, whereabouts on Alvin Avenue, whereabouts on...
I'm not sure. I think they have warning signs, so you would typically put, the MUTCD tells you the distance on either side of the residence of where the concern is.
So wherever that particular residence is.
That's right.
Okay, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, that's fine. Okay, any other discussion on this? And the reason for, obviously, I mean, it's pretty evident, the Governor's Road one is just to try and calm traffic a little bit. And the other ones, too, are obvious, I guess, so... Any further discussion, seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'm sorry, was Alvin Avenue and what else?
Waldeck Road.
Waldeck was...
Waldeck is the hearing, and Alvin is the blind person.
Thank you.
And this is on a permanent basis, except for the last two?
Yes.
Yes, basically what we do is, once we document who it is, we make it part of it. They notify us if they move or they move away.
Right.
The same as if you have some, we put a handicap, this board votes a handicap space to a specific resident because if a handicapped person living there, you're required, did one on Brook Road last year. If that person moves away, we then will come back and amend it and have that HP sign taken away. It's very similar.
How are the complaints on Governor's Road recently?
Well, they put the speed bumps back in on the Quincy side, they just, the mayor, was it the mayor or the DPW? Someone ordered them put back, they were not going to go there, now they're back.
They reconsidered, originally they were taking them out, and then they reconsidered.
Did they put the proper ones back in, the speed humps, or...
They have, they're just the humps.
The longer... No, they didn't.
They're not compliant, but they're better than what used to be there, they're better than what used to be there.
At least they're painted now, so you can see them.
No, they're not painted, I looked yesterday, they're not painted. But we've had ongoing construction almost for several months now, gas on Governor's. So for a good part of the day, it's closed, or it's cut to one lane. So just the detour alone forces commuters to pay attention, slow down a little bit. But that's not a permanent thing, and if I was on the Governor's Road, that wouldn't be the solution I was looking for, for the issues that they're dealing with. But we'll continue to...
Have you ever put speed bumps there?
No, we put stop signs, we've not put speed bumps anywhere in town. We put stop signs, but that didn't work.
We put in speed bumps.
Well, we, this, our commission hasn't, not in five years yet.
We have them...
We have not in the last seven years.
But we have them on Thadja Street, and we, well, speed humps.
We have raised intersections at...
And then you've got them in Harland.
We have that on Elliot Street.
Elliot, yeah, that's a raised.
Then we have speed humps over on Hillside in Harland.
Harland, right, yes.
I'm not sure how they got there, but they're there.
Those are humps, those aren't bumps.
And those are compliant.
In what Grant... They're not quite compliant. They, I think when the era when they put in, they were fine, but if you were going to put something like that in today, you'd be looking at something like a table, much more onerous, bigger, higher, to really slow cars, not costly. But they do things differently in Quincy, we know that.
I noticed that Deham uses portable ones.
Yeah, you put them on, you take them back in.
Yeah. Yeah, they got, probably cheaper, I'm sure, but...
And they work, they're up in Low Circle. Nobody drives in around Low Circle anymore.
There's a private way.
Again, private way, they can't do what they want, right?
I won't go in there. You may as well put the spikes, same thing.
I think they ticked those on Governor's Road.
Okay, we got one more here, and this is to amend Article 5, Section 1 as follows. To install no parking here to corner, signs on both sides of Fairfax Road, approximately 20 feet from the intersection of Brook Road. What was the reason for this is...
Okay, so basically, between St. Mary's Church and the school, especially when they have large events, they're catching a brunt of the overflow parking, and they use Fairfax for, parking out to that corner, it's just not safe. So someone's trying to take a turn, either coming east or west on Brook Road. We felt we had to post it back, so that was how we made that recommendation to you.
Okay, so that is the recommendation.
I second the motion.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion, seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, item 11, and we are getting near the end, is approval of contracts for the chief of police, approval of contracts for the deputy chief of police, the fire chief, the contract for the town of Milton firefighters, local 1116. And I should actually say dates on these. The police chief is July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2015. The deputy is July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. The fire chief's contract is July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2015. The firefighters' local 1116 is for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2016, to approve a contract.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, yes, to approve a contract between the town of Milton and the town accountant for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2015. And finally, to approve a contract between the town and the assistant town administrator for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2015. We can, it was all, one motion if you want, or we can do them as separates.
I'm good with doing one motion.
I'll accept what Mr. Hurley said as a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, any further discussion?
Just would like to thank the acting town administrator, Henry Fagan, for her efforts in assisting the board to negotiate these contracts. And I personally am very pleased that we're able to give certain employees, such as the police chief, fire chief, town accountant, and so on, an extended contract that will provide them with the security of their position.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item 12 on the agenda is approval of the revised FY14 Fire Department budget. Now, what has happened here is we just approved the contract for FY13 for the firefighters' salaries. Because we're on a level-dollar budget, that increases their budget for their salary line item for 2013, which carries across into 2014, so it... Basically, the budget is a little greater because we're moving, well, it's just greater because...
Because of the salary.
Salary increases. And it was the elimination of a $20,000, there was originally a $20,000 new equipment line item, and that was eliminated in order to accomplish that. So the budget is, for FY14, is $4,732,656, of which $4,254,399 is salaries and wages, our personnel, and... and $208,257 is general expense. And that general expense is the same as the general expense for FY13. So the only difference is the increase for FY14 of the longevity and steps in the salary line item.
And this is, is this a change to the original?
It's a change to the original. And the original one, because the FY13 salary line did not have the, because it was no contract negotiated at the time they submitted their original budget, their salary line item was based upon whatever contract was currently approved, which was obviously less. So when, when that carried in, because of the level dollar budgets and our methodology, when that carried in FY14 on the original budget, it carried forward really at the FY12 salary plus the step in longevity increases into FY14. So now this amends it to.
So this changes it just because of the vote we took on the contract?
Yes. Exactly.
I see, okay.
So we do have a.
I'll make a motion to approve, sign it forward to the warrant committee, the revised fiscal year 14 Fire Department budget in the amount of $4,732,656.
Second. Motion been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Now, item 13 is a discussion of the annual town meeting warrant articles. These are not all the warrant articles, but they're the, the non boilerplate ones, the, the ones that are, and we've got 24, well, 24 of them that have been submitted, that are other than budget articles. And I can go through them, I'll go through them relatively quickly, but I'll go through them. Number one, and we don't know what article number this is ultimately going to be, but is the Blue Hills Regional Vocational School establishment of a stabilization fund. Blue Hills, the Voc-Tech wants to establish a stabilization fund, similar to stabilization funds, which, you know, we have for various departments, I think, not various departments, but similar to stabilization funds that we have, you know, and municipalities have. And they do have the right to do that under master general law. But it does take a, a two-thirds vote of the member communities in the region. So that's why it does have to go on ours. They're not, they're not requesting any money be placed in the stabilization fund, they just want to establish the stabilization fund.
But next is coming, you got to place money in it.
Sooner or later, yeah, they're going to be asking to, but this year, no, they're not asking for any money, as far as we know.
We want to open the bank account now and fund it later.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Right.
The, the second is, is just kind of a housekeeping. It's the treasurer requesting the rescinding of unused borrowings. There are a bunch of, and what, what happens is, at town meeting, we authorize expenditures, capital expenditures that we're going to borrow money to fund. Those are based upon estimated amounts. But the borrowing is authorized and for purposes of the town's accounting, it's out there as kind of a contingent liability that, that it's out there. So from time to time for housekeeping, if you don't use those, you rescind them. A few of them are surface drains that apparently just didn't get used.
I think the most obvious one, Chair, Mr. Chairman, is, take example of the water department. We've applied.
Oh, they weren't surface drains, they were, yeah, they were.
Water Department in Sore, the MWR has grant programs.
Yep.
The, the borrowing authorization is for the full amount, so let's keep the math simple.
Yep.
We get a million, it's not a million dollars, let's say we had a million dollars under the program from the MWR for water. We have to authorize the million dollars through town meeting. Yet when we apply for the, the grant, it's 45 percent. So 450,000 is an outright gift and 550 is a loan. So at the end of the day, we're only borrowing 550, we have to rescind the 450. But the initial authorization has to be in place in order to apply for some of those.
And basically.
Housekeeping we do every year to rescind that, that difference between the two every year.
Yes, since it's not definitive at the time that you do the appropriation, appropriation basically is to, to accept either by borrowing, gift, it allows you to do a bunch of things. So, so to the extent we don't borrow and get gift or, you know, or grant money, then.
I see.
That borrowing authorization is still out there and has to be done away with.
Joe, this total is about 1.240, is that correct, that we're rescinding?
Yes. And, and again, it really is not.
I'm not sure if there are others, but.
There are a few out there.
There's, there's three different water borrowings that require some portion to be rescinded.
Right, there's others other than that too.
So this was actually money we were going to borrow? And we didn't borrow.
Well, money that we had the authority to borrow or accept gifts or, or grants for, yes.
Right, okay.
So that's all that really is. And like I said, it's more housekeeping than anything else.
Are we going to vote on these individually or?
No, just, just kind of together to a group, yeah. Other than a couple at the end, we may choose to defer them. So we can talk about those as we get to them.
You have to take, you have to take two votes, constituent, you have to vote the ones that go in, the ones that are included. And then the others, you just vote to include.
Include them, yes, okay. Okay, the third one is selectmen design, it's a selectmen submitted article for design review plan appropriation for East Milton Square. And again, because we lost the, the grant, or it was repurposed from the Fed, that million that we spent 200,000 on, there was 800,000 left, that would have originally been money that we were going to use for the design phase of East Milton. Since that was pulled back by the federal government and then repurposed by the state to another project that was ready to go, we effectively right now have no money for the design phase of East Milton. We could, if we wanted to wait, ask the federal government to allow us to spend the, some of the other million dollars, which is, I think earmarked only for construction, is that true?
That's correct.
And, but to do that would just delay the whole project in East Milton even longer. So the decision was made to ask for.
Minimum of a six-month delay in asking for the federal money to be used.
Right, so to get the thing moving forward.
Ask to borrow the money.
Yeah.
Not, not to use it, not to borrow, just to use it.
Why don't you come up here to the microphone, Bill?
This is for design engineering.
Joe, do you want to come up to the table?
You go, he's left to.
Have you come up with a number for design engineering? One time you said 200?
I said two, I think that it's probably more in the range of three. I heard the number that went to the warrant committee was four. I, I do need to tighten that number, but it's, it's one of those, I have to get a number from the engineers and it's not a, are we going to get the job? That's the kind of, you know, they're helping me, but they're, you know, how far, they don't want to give me the number unless there's something there, so I have to ask a couple of different people and get a couple of different inputs.
So we're asking the town to put up 400,000, approximately?
Yeah, I mean, the warrant committee will, will come up with the recommendation, but will, will basically indicate how much we're looking for.
Well, again, it's an authorization to borrow, similar to that other circumstance.
Yes.
Sets a limit when the, when the bids come in. If in fact it's 300, it'd be a future vote to rescind 100,000.
Right. It's something that if we got another grant, that we could replenish that 400 grand?
Yes. Right, if you were to get another grant, find other funding sources that you would never need to go to bond on, you would simply rescind the whole thing and, and simply never borrow it.
Right.
Sure.
Back to the same article you just looked at.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, number four is a planning board article, is the master plan appropriation. The master plan's being done in three phases, I believe. Three?
Two.
So two 25, that's right, two $25,000 phases. So this is the second phase.
This would be phase two.
So it's, it's appropriation of $25,000 just to complete the master plan.
You think that will complete it?
No. 25,000, no. My number has always been that it's going to cost you over 100 for the master plan. You just spent 25 for the visioning. I, I didn't realize there was a $25,000 number there. I would have expected that it.
Well, again, I, I don't think.
75 is on the low side.
Where's all this money being spent, if you don't mind me asking?
I'm sorry?
Where's all the money being spent on one? Just consultant?
The consultant right now is 25,000 that town meeting approved for the visioning component. And that will be completed by the next town meeting.
So the consultant is doing all the work, he's asking all the questions?
Well, there's a committee that's, that's going to be doing a substantial amount of work in terms of the visioning. But in terms of actually writing the plan, in terms of guiding us through the process, it will be the consultant.
If, if we tried to write a master plan by ourself, it would be a committee's report back to you. If you do the, if you allow the committee to take and do that direction, there's always somebody who's going to say, I don't agree with it. If you have a consultant who is sifting and filtering through all of these comments, they're chosen because they're objective. If, if a committee's doing it, the committee is always assumed to have a, a definite bent in, in one direction. If I was trying to do a master plan for you as your planning director, you'd call it my report. You'd call it my plan. And it's not my plan, it's the community's plan. So we're trying to find somebody who can be objective with everything that they get back for results. That's your consultant. And it, do you trust the consultant? Do you agree that this consultant can attain that type of information? And does the report really say something? And that's where we are now. We chose Brown Walker because we believe that they can help define what that master plan will look like. You have a pretty wide-ranging group, membership of that committee. And you, you've got one person from each precinct all over town. And you're not going to have it be an East Milton study or a, you know, a, a Blue Hill Ave study or a Randolph Ave study. This is everybody. This is inclusive. It's, we're, I mean, this goes back to, it's only inclusive as, as much as you put into it. There, there will be public forums. The first public forum is January 26th, 26th, the Saturday, nine to 12 over at Tucker School. It's, everybody is invited. It's, it's, you put in what you would like to see the town look like. You're looking to see growth, go to the meeting. You're looking for no growth, go to the meeting. You, you have something that you want to say about the community, you want to help define what the community is, go to the meeting. And this isn't the only one, there'll be another.
It's meant to be a community-driven document.
And I think that's great. So they're gathering information from everyone, give it to the consultant.
Yes.
He writes the report.
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, so we're putting in for another 25,000 though, right?
Yes.
Well, we don't, actually, we don't, it's going to be the planning board's decision in terms of how much, not, not the slack.
I didn't, I've never seen a number attached to it.
Yeah, the 25 may be correct.
Okay, all right.
I mean, that was a number, I don't know where it came from.
That was a number that we talked about in the 14 meeting.
I didn't say 25.
I don't know. I don't know.
Have you, have you ever heard a number on it?
No, but I know the number that I have given in the past. But to, to think you're going to get it for an extra 25, no. Can you keep it below, what can be, you want to keep it below, you want to keep it below 150? Absolutely. You want to try to keep it below 100?
So we approved 25 last May, right?
Yes.
We're only going to spend what we can get.
Is what?
This May.
Take us right up to this May.
Yep.
Yes.
And then whatever we approve is going to take us to the following May.
To the end, actually.
To the end.
The end?
To the end.
But until you get a number.
You're not going to drag it out for three years, you're going to finish it in a, you want to get it done in a year.
Right. So maybe, maybe it's like your sewer capital needs, maybe we should ask for more and not spend it, give it back. Versus running out of money and coming back again.
I don't think that you need to take and put a number on this one right now. I know that the planning board is discussing what that number is.
Right, so they'll come up with a recommendation.
And I think that within the recommendation, we'll, we'll.
I see.
Come up with a number.
Yeah. Number five is a selectmen article and it's, was this going to be a selectmen slash planning board article? The housing production plan?
I believe it should be both.
Yeah.
Selectmen and the planning board, because both are required to sign.
Yeah.
In order for it to become effective.
Right, so that's the way it will go through.
The planning board did at its December 27th meeting, take to, they, they approved a housing production plan, the article for a housing production plan.
So, and everybody knows, everybody at the table knows what a housing production plan is. But I think for those people listening on TV or watching on TV, a housing production plan is a plan for affordable housing. It's a, almost a master plan, if you will, in terms of how the town will deal with and how it will actually meet its goals with respect to affordable housing, to meet its 10%. Ultimately, to try and meet its 10%.
Subsidize housing inventory number.
Affordable housing inventory. Right now, we've got about four and a half percent towards our goal. And the goal, again, is 10% of the housing stock in the town be affordable. And this is a means of setting out a plan to deal with it. The, the benefit for doing it is basically if you set out the plan, if it's approved by the state and if it's certified that you have met your progress towards goal for any given year, then you keep a certain degree of local control over developers coming in and wanting to build affordable housing. Without it, you, and if you're not at your 10% inventory, then to a large degree, there is no local control.
However, this doesn't stop the current 40B application?
No, no.
From moving forward?
It.
It won't impact that?
Unless, unless we get a, a plan approved, well, both approved and certified, the certified portion is that you've made the half percent progress in a given year. That, that's what they certify to, that's my understanding. And until you got that, you really have nothing other than a plan. You, you don't have a tool to keep local control.
If I turn a plan in tomorrow and they turn in an application, they, the 40B turns in an application next week, they win, because mine is not certified yet. I have to be certified and then I can stop the 40B.
To be certified, we need 48.
Right.
New units.
But I don't have a certified plan yet. Project will not be affected by our housing production plan.
Until the certification.
Just for, out of curiosity, I looked up the other day, I think there are four communities that have certified plans for 2012. Four in the whole state.
I think Easton is one, is it?
Easton may or be, or be a 10%.
I think Easton, Easton because of the shovel project, the shovel, the shovel works project is, is meeting it.
But there, there are very, very few.
Right, the other will be conquered. But if you've got 10%, you can make that housing production plan.
Right. And if you've got the half percent progress towards goal.
Right.
You're, you're, you're certifiable too, but there aren't many communities that, that are there. But there aren't many communities that are there.
Bill, do you know, and this is just a hypothetical, if this three hundred units go through, what percentage will that bring us to?
Seven?
Seven percent?
Right.
Well, we have, we need nine forty-five, we've got four twenty-seven. If we put three hundred, we'll be up.
We need nine hundred and forty-five affordable units.
Right.
And we have...
These are my round numbers, yeah.
And we have four?
Four twenty-seven.
Right.
Add three hundred to it, now we're up to seven twenty-seven.
Yeah, there's approximately ninety-six hundred, give or take, housing units in the town. So ten percent of that's...
It is scary, but it is a case of, you want to take and try to attain the half percent. To think that we're going to go and do one percent, one and a half percent, we don't produce that many new units of housing, never mind affordable units of housing.
Right. That being said, though, is the housing production plan important? Yeah, if we can get a housing production plan in and approved by the state and then we, for whatever, you know, if we do get the forty B project in Mill Creek one, that will basically give us a certification for two years of exemption from forty B. So even if we don't stop this one, this one can be...
Stop the next one.
We'll stop the next one. If we don't do a housing production plan at all, then they build it, we still can't stop. You know, it won't give us any exemption because we don't have a plan to be certified.
But we can only stop it if we meet what we say we're going to do.
Well, but we will automatically by, if, if the one goes up in Brush Hill or if anyone goes in for more than ninety-six units, then you get your two years exemption. But you need a housing production plan approved in order to get that exemption. So that's kind of the way it works.
There's lots of communities that have a plan that don't meet it. When I, I met with you and I came in with the housing production and I had the stack of, I think, four different communities, those communities weren't meeting those numbers. I mean, you look at the numbers that Situate, Walpole, Walpole had to produce sixty-three units. They're not producing sixty-three units. They would like to, but they're not doing it. They need a forty B project to get to that number. So you try to reach, you try to work on a friendly forty B.
Once you submit a plan, what's the timeframe on getting it certified?
Well, certified is, there's two different, approved and certified are different things. Approved, I think they have to write you back in thirty days. If they don't, then it's automatically approved, I believe.
Yep.
Otherwise, they'll write you back in thirty days and either approve it or reject it and give you, explain why and then you resubmit it until it gets approved. So that's kind of the process. The certification process is you go to them and say, "We've met our progress" and they certify it.
Certify that you met your progress. So the first step is to get the approval of the plan.
Get approved, right.
Then in terms of, like, we're saying we have four hundred and twenty-seven affordables currently in the town. I do have a concern, you know, you want to get enough credit for your numbers so you want as high a number as you can in order to have local control. And who makes sure, whose job is it to make sure that we get credit for every affordable unit we have? Like, for instance, the new affordables that are down at Central Ave, are they in the four twenty-seven number?
Uh, yeah, not.
Okay, so whose job is it to keep updating that number? Is that the housing, director of the housing authority?
No, state. The state does it. We can, we can go back and look at it, but DHCD actually changes the number every, I believe it's July first. But we can go, we can keep going in and checking it.
Who gives them the information that we've added to our list?
We give, it's a cross between the town and the developer because it's something that's done in concert. We do it and we turn all of our information to DHCD.
And they keep the list?
Department of Housing and Community Development.
And then, like, I've heard that section, what's called Section Eight doesn't qualify because there's a transient factor?
Correct.
And sometimes that, that doesn't make sense because the one that's on Section Eight does, in fact, stay there for a period of time or is, if they move, they're replaced by somebody else on Section Eight.
It's not the transient factor that's the problem. The problem is, is the property itself is not indeed restricted to be affordable.
What you're talking about is a person...
It's a private residence, they can get out of that anytime they want.
But how?
But what you're talking about as a person, what this is talking about is a unit, a house itself or a building, it doesn't have to be a house.
Right, so under Section Eight...
What you're talking about is a person and how they pay their, how they pay their rent.
Under Section Eight, if I have a two-family house and I let somebody, I enter into contract, it's a one-year contract. At the end of that one year, I say, "I'm done, I don't want it anymore." That's why it's not affordable.
And you can go in with a Section Eight and you can be allotted X amount of money, but your rent is more. You can pay the difference for the more rent. So it isn't necessarily an affordable unit. It's a market rate unit that you have a Section Eight voucher being applied to that rent.
I, you know, I have heard people, a number of people say that Section Eight should be somehow added to the affordable housing number.
Yeah, and it never is going to be, it just doesn't meet the definition.
I'm not an expert, I don't know that much about it, is what I hear.
There are some Section Eight units, if you have a multifamily housing project, a lot of times that multifamily, it could be a long-term housing tax credit project, it could be other kinds of multifamily that happens also to have a Section Eight contract associated with it. It's called project-based Section Eight, and those will qualify. But again, because you've got a multifamily that is permanently restricted to, you know, affordable housing units. You know, they get the Section Eight subsidy just to be able to operate them, but...
Okay. As you take that money issue, as you do a master plan, one of the components of a master plan is housing. By doing the housing production plan, some of what you're doing is the same information. So by doing the two of them at the same time, you are saving something. I can't give you a number for what that is, but there is a cost savings by doing, your master plan will provide information for the housing production plan. A housing production plan will provide information for your housing section of your master plan. If you're doing them two at the same time, there is a lesser cost involved. It's not appreciable, but there is a lesser cost.
Right. Okay, number six is a selectmen article. We believe this is probably going to be a selectmen slash planning board slash Board of Health article. And this is to either amend the general bylaws or the zoning bylaws regarding the use of medical marijuana. Everybody knows that, you know, this past election, the, the state has made legal the use of marijuana for medical purposes with a prescription. Haven't written regulations for it yet, but it's going to allow there be facilities to distribute medical marijuana and also, again, make the use of it legal. The concern here is that, right now, since we haven't seen any regulations, our major concern is the possibility of somebody coming into the town and want to open a distribution of medical marijuana, a distribution facility, dispensary, whatever you want to call it, to perhaps write some regulations as to restrict location of that facility. You know, it could be almost anything that, you know, it hasn't been vetted out yet, but, you know, not within so many feet of a school, not within so many feet of a, or maybe just a location similar to the adult entertainment zoning laws that we passed several years ago. Because the problem with adult entertainment is, it's, adult entertainment, you know, is protected by freedom, you know, freedom of, freedom of speech, freedom of whatever it is. So you can't, you can't not allow it to come into your town, but you can restrict where it's in your town. But you can't just ban it outright. So the concern is if we don't have something in place, similar, you know, a similar challenge could be made by somebody wanting to come in and put a facility within the town. So I think that's, we tend to be proactive.
Right. The Department of Public Health will be coming out with, with regulations May first. Our town meeting's May sixth. So we're doing something to be proactive. The article would be co-presented by the selectmen, the planning board, and the Board of Health. The Board of Health will eventually write their own rules and regulations dealing with the dispensary and how.
Yeah.
The selectmen are involved because the, the public safety aspect of it. The planning board is there because you're picking a location and zoning is using that location. I did bring it up to the planning board tonight. I did discuss using the adult entertainment as a starting point, just using that and being able to go in and use that as a starting point to go and craft a new location for that dispensary. The state law requires that there be one dispensary in every county. We have no idea where that's going to be in Norfolk County. But there's at least one.
In jail. It's probably already there.
Maybe. But we're trying to be a little proactive to it. We know where we have our adult entertainment section now and it's actually too granted out. And we, we have ours, we have everything about it. That may work, it might not. I did have a debate with Mr. Whiteside and he said that he has a legal friend who has written a model bylaw. So we will read what that model bylaw is. The planning board will have further discussions on what this, what the recommendation from the planning board will be to bring this thing forward as we get closer to public hearings.
So number seven is, again, selectmen submitted, it's a home rule petition to authorize, no, I didn't, okay. So it's a home rule petition to authorize an override to fund public safety personnel medical expenses and establish a special purpose fund for the payment of those expenses. Now, the gist of this is, at this point, you know, we've got an injured firefighter that's been permanently injured and the town is responsible for his medical expenses. It's been running on average about a half million dollars a year. We bonded, we, we had a home rule petition and still do have a home rule petition to bond those costs, even though they're operating expenses, not capital expenses. Typically, you can't bond an operating expense. But we do have the authority to do that. The problem we're running into now is we bonded about two and a half million dollars, give or take, of his medical costs. And the debt service now for FY thirteen or fourteen, I forget which, fourteen maybe, is going to be about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So it's getting to the point where it's, it's not a wise thing to do. You know, we're getting to the point where the debt service is just going to start killing us.
The debt service on the total amount combined?
Yeah, the total amount combined. And it's just going to keep growing and growing and growing, you know, year after year. So the Department of Revenue is getting nervous. Certainly, the, the bond rating agencies are getting nervous about the continuing bonding of this. And town meeting was getting nervous about it. So we had discussions with the Mass DOR and this is kind of, this is basically their recommendation that we go for an override for a, and it does require a home rule petition because it's a funky override. We go for, say we decide that we want to establish this special purpose fund at five hundred thousand dollars. The special purpose fund is going to be to pay his medical costs. The legislation would be, and to fund it the first time, we would go for an override for five hundred thousand dollars, if that's the number. That money gets deposited in that fund. As we spend down that money, say we spend down three hundred thousand dollars of it in that, in the next year after, you know, after we fund it, then we go back out for, we have the authority then, just, we don't have to do another override vote. We just replenish the fund over the levy limit with a three hundred thousand dollar because we need to make up three hundred thousand dollars to get back to the five. So that there's always five in there to pay medical expenses. At the end of time, when there's no longer any need for the fund, the fund would, whatever's in the fund would be returned back to the taxpayers through, almost like in essence, an underwrite for, it's not actually an underwrite, but, but a reduction in that year for whatever happens to be in that fund. So the fund would never be used for anything other than paying those medical expenses and it would just almost be like a revolving fund. You know, that you use it, runs low, you replenish it. But it's all over the levy limit, so it's not affecting any of the town operating budgets. Because that's the problem right now, you know, it would get to be to the point where, you know, the rest of the town just couldn't operate because we just physically don't generate enough revenue to pay for these medical expenses and pay the town's bills.
So would it be a, our two and a half percent increase every year for the property taxes plus whatever it takes to make up five hundred thousand?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And it wouldn't, so it wouldn't be pot, it wouldn't be like an operating override. What happens with an operating override is that goes into the, that goes into the levy and then gets bumped up by two and a half percent, year after year after year. So if you do a, if you do a two million dollar override in year one, well, the next year, that two million goes into your base and gets increased by two and a half percent. Two and a half percent the next year, two and a half percent. This won't do that. This is more like a debt override in that sense, that it's always going to be an amount. It doesn't get up into that, that determination of the...
So how would it work? Town meeting would have to approve this and then go to the legislator?
And then it would have to go as a home rule petition to the, to the state. The House and Senate would have to approve it, the governor would have to sign it. It could potentially take as much as two years, you know, two, you know, into two fiscal years to, before it gets approved.
And we're already bonded, right, for two seventeen?
We're already bonded, we're already bonded...
Two thousand and eighteen.
Well, we have authority to bond. We're already, we've already bonded through FY twelve, I think, actually thirteen.
FY thirteen.
Yeah, we're pretty, we've got, we've got that under control. We don't have FY fourteen, we don't have a mechanism for fourteen because clearly this won't be in place, even if it, even if we do get the home rule petition. The home rule petition has to come in first, then we have to have an override vote second. You know, so a lot of things have to, the stars really have to align to get this done in a year. You know, so it's more likely two years that we're looking at. So that's, that's what that warrant article is going to be about.
Would that have a minimal impact on the taxpayer?
Yeah, five hundred thousand is not, you know, I mean, I can't say it's insignificant, but, but it's certainly...
Minimal in terms of the overall picture?
Right.
And then looking at it another way, is it a cost-saving measure?
It's a cost-saving measure in the sense that we're not paying interest on debt, yes.
What is the balance, do you know what the balance is, Emory? What we owe on those bonds over the last number of years?
It's about two and a half million right now.
So we're paying interest on two and a half million?
Yeah. Fortunately, the interest rates are relatively cheap right now.
Right.
So although it's not as cheap as capital debt because these are taxable bonds. So people buying them are paying income tax... So people buying them are, are paying income tax on the, on the interest that they are receiving from these bonds.
I see.
So the rate isn't, I mean, our rate's been under 2%, I think, for, for our tax exempt bonds lately. You know, these are more like 3% or 3-something.
Three, three point, yeah.
But, I mean, it's still not outrageous, but it's, but it's, you know, and as time goes on, I mean, these low interest rates aren't going to last forever.
Right.
So as you do for future bond, you know, the, the interest rate's going to start to climb sooner or later.
So I think this has been proactive. This is good planning.
Fiscally prudent, absolutely.
Yep. So, the companion warrant article to this is number eight on what we have here, is we need a mechanism without bonding to deal with at least FY 14's medical expenses and, and perhaps FY 15. So the idea is to establish a special purpose fund, put probably a million dollars into it from free cash, and use that to cover us for the two years that we may have to be going without an override.
Okay, so you're, you're saying we, we don't bond at all?
We don't bond anything for 14 or 15.
Gotcha.
That, that the bonding ends with 13.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what number eight is. Number nine is the purchase of Deer Run Lane, and this is again a Selectman article. And if you recall, at our last meeting, we accepted a gift from the Copeland Foundation for 175,000 dollars to purchase the land on Deer Run Lane for the benefit of the cemetery. It's, what, about two acres of land, give or take, which will create some, what's 300?
1300.
1300 gray sites. And, so this is just the appropriation to purchase the land. And obviously, we do have a purchase and sale agreement that's still being vetted out, but, but it is for 175,000. So we've got the cash in the form of a gift, and that's all that article does. Number 10 is a citizen's petition for a zoning bylaw for a detached condominium residence development. And is this under cluster, is this under the cluster zoning?
It is, it is not under the cluster.
Okay.
Which is why they're bringing it in, trying to put in a PUD, a plan to develop it.
Okay, okay. But, and this is the property, the, the other greenhouse up on?
Blue Hill Ave. 591 Blue Hill Ave.
Right.
There's one. 60,000 square feet.
It's almost at the corner of Robbins and?
Yeah, yeah.
Rose, Rose Hill?
Yeah.
Yep.
And it hasn't been, it's been vacant for several years now. I think it's still used by somebody.
I think they're using it for landscape, but not heavy duty.
Right, just to kind of store some supplies there or something. So this would be to, is it four condominium units?
It's, I think it's more than that, I think it's six.
Six.
Their, their use permit has expired, so they're not supposed to be doing anything but residential there now.
On that, yeah.
But this is a, I know that Paul Sullivan is the, is the developer. I know he is bringing it forward. He brought it to the Planning Board tonight to discuss it. He did file it as a citizen petition with the Selectman. He went in to discuss it with the Planning Board to tell them, you know, what he had done. I know that he is contemplating going to the Zoning Board of Appeals. He's trying to weigh his, weigh his options right now.
Okay, so that's basically what that is. And it's obviously a citizen petition, so the, the Planning Board will have some input on it, but.
It'll be a public hearing.
Number 11 is a Planning Board article also to amend or add zoning bylaw, Section 3, for assisted living residence development section. And basically, that's the one that we tried to do at the October Town Meeting at the Horse Farm, and it got sent back basically for a little further study and sprucing up.
It did, and the Planning Board and several members of the public came, came together, made some changes. Since then, Ned Corcoran's been hired by the Grelia Group to work on that project. He did bring, he did have input from himself. He did go and have input from Emmett Smarza, who was making comment about the affordability clause of it. So you'll see that there's an affordable clause to the, the new language. I know that they are meeting with the Planning Board on the next, on the 24th.
Okay.
So they'll be talking about it again before the public hearing.
Let's see. Number 12 is submitted by the Historic Commission, and it's to amend or add a zoning bylaw, Paragraph 9, Section 7, Subsection C. And it's called Swift's Hatch Shop. Basically, it's, my understanding, making a historic district kind of there.
It's, it is. It's, the, the red building that's on Adams Street that's attached to, I think it's 99? 90?
Yeah, it's in Lowell, just about in Lowell Mills.
It's on the even side of the street, so it's not 99, it'd be 90. They've tried to take the building down several times. The Historic Commission said that it is of historic nature. No matter what they do on that site, they're not going to be able to meet the parking requirements. And what this article's going to do is allow for the property to not meet the onsite parking requirement.
Provided they don't rip it down.
Yes.
Number 13 is a, a Selectman article, and this is to amend general bylaws, Chapter 6B, Section 2, traffic commission appointments. And it, it's more housekeeping than anything else. It's, it's to add a, kind of a, a rotating citizen to.
Annual citizen appointment.
Appointment. And then it's to basically change Bill Ritchie's title on the committee, because he was school and now he's consolidated facilities. And that's all that one really does.
Was there a third provision?
And the wire, and the wire.
The wire?
Oh, the wire, yeah, right.
Okay, to change it over to the signal manager?
Yes, yeah. Again, all housekeeping. 14 through 16 are retirement board articles. To be perfectly honest, I haven't even read them yet, so I don't even know what they say. Have you read through them, Emory, at all?
I haven't read all of them. One of them is just to authorize the retirement board to get a stipend, similar to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors.
Yeah, and that would come out of the retirement fund.
That would come out of the retirement fund, yes.
An administrative expense of the fund. It probably does have an impact in terms of what they have to pass on, because they still have to, you still have to fund the benefits based upon an actuarial number.
Mm-hmm.
So this will be expense over and above that, I would imagine. So, so there will be some impact, all minimal.
That's right. And one of the other ones is to raise the benefit under Chapter 139, Acts of 2012, from 9,000 to 12,000 per year for survivor benefits.
Okay.
And the third one, I'm not sure what the third one was. A survivor benefit to a deceased spouse should not be less than 500 dollars.
Okay. And the Retirement Board will come up with some impact study on, on those things?
Yes, they will meet with the Warrant Committee.
All right. Number 17 is again a Selectman article to amend Chapter 4, Section 17.1 of the General Bylaws, Capital Improvement Planning Committee addition. And again, I believe this is just Bill Ritchie adding?
You're just adding an eighth member.
Right.
Currently, it's seven members, you're adding an eighth member, and it's the Consolidated Facilities Director.
Right. Which right now, he's kind of sits in that committee more as a consultant than a, than a member.
Not a voting member.
So I'm making him a voting member. Okay, number 18, and again, I haven't really read it yet, but it's a citizen petition, constitutional amendment to reverse Citizens United versus Federal Election Commission. And really, it has no binding, it's really just putting a petition to the state and federal government, or, or just the federal government?
The federal government.
To, to reverse the decision in Citizens United versus?
Place limits on corporate expenditures.
Right.
And did influencing elections?
In elections. So it's one of those things that, if it passes, then we'll have to write a letter to, to the feds. If it doesn't, then nothing. Number 19 is a Selectman submitted article, and it's the establishment of a Firespace Needs Committee. This is kind of dusting off an old, an old warrant article that was pulled about three years ago, I think. That we're, we all know, and I think we're all in agreement, that we, we need something done with our fire stations, that they're extremely old and not very functional any longer, as is the DPW facility. But, but, you know, it, the, the fire stations are special purpose buildings, and, you know, you have to put some thought into what you want and where you want it, and how, what you want it to look like, how big it is, and, you know, there, there are a lot of things that have to go into it. It may require a consultant to help a committee come to recommendations. That's to be determined at some point in time. So this is really just an article to establish the committee. It may wind up if, and it's written open-ended, that we could attach an appropriation to it if the powers that be determine that they believe it is necessary to have a consultant. You know, we might ask for a small amount of money for a consultant.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's see. Item 20 is, and this may or may not, this may get pulled at some point in time, is a Selectman's article for the appropriation from the Stabilization Fund. In FY 13, we parked 600,000, somewhat 100,000, in the Stabilization Fund, knowing that it was going to be needed in the following year to plug holes in, you know, the revenue side, you know, to meet all the appropriations for FY 14. So it was parked there on a temporary basis, and with the idea of pulling it out for FY 14. We do have a significant amount of free cash this year. The bond rating agencies do not like to see the Stabilization Fund used as a parking site for money. They, they don't like seeing it go in and come out, go in, come out, go in, come out. So what I've suggested to the Warrant Committee is, if we don't have to, it would be far better to use some of the current free cash and just appropriate that and leave the money in the Stabilization Fund. Because the alternative, they took it out of the Stabilization Fund, then we're going to put the free cash back in the Stabilization Fund. So it's, you know, it's six one half dozen the other, but it just looks better if we don't pull it out, if we just use some of the free cash and lure that. So that, that article may.
May not.
May not be there. 21, this is, this is a DPW, this is a Selectman submitted article, and it was suggested by a resident, and it's an appropriation for reconstruction of Central Avenue. The resident that submitted it had indicated that he believed that it was about 600,000 to 700,000 dollars to do Central Avenue, but that, again, you could probably speak to it better than I can, Joe, but that's just really the roadway and not the entire street, really.
That's correct. It's, um, the pavement management plan that, that we use as a basis for looking at, you know, planning for various roadway projects over the, the next 20 or more years, uses the roadway pavement, gutter to gutter, the travelway itself, as the basis for that, that starting point for that plan. And the thought is, is when you're on the streets, addressing the traffic need on the roadway surface, at that time, do you then look at the curbing, the berm, the tree lawns, the sidewalk, signals, signs, line painting, and everything else pertinent to it? So typically, the roadway surface itself, in the, in the process that it sees, if it's a, if it's a full reclaim, grind it up, grade it out in two layers of hot top, that cost is typically half of the total project cost, when you look at the others. So i- in, in reality, if you take the pavement management plan, it's really a 1.3 million dollar project to, to replace it in kind.
Mm-hmm.
Central Avenue's a, a difficult animal. The town, nearly a decade ago, set its vision on, on traffic calming, narrowing it down, making it more pedestrian friendly, recognizing its pulling, particularly kids on the way to school, both to the middle school and to the, into the Glover, pulling them out of the Columbines and out of the L H Street area. And as they come across those streets, they're, they've got this huge expansive roadway. So it was refuge islands, strategic crossing locations, and signalization, particularly up at the Brook intersection. So in reality, the plan that we, we've worked on, and we've, the way to say we've worked on it, we've, we've pursued outside funding sources for that full decade, various grant opportunities, whether it was P Wed, whether it was.
Footprint Roads.
Footprint, Footprint Roads.
I didn't know.
The economic, P Wed, Economic Development Grant, everything, including the federal highway system, using the TIP program.
I didn't know.
So all, all the way down, we've just kept getting the door closed. And, and the reality is, it's, it's very important, it's very visible to the town, the town's people know what they want. We've actually had several public hearings. We, we also know what we want and what they don't want. What they don't want was the multi-use bicycle path. So we've cut the multi-use bicycle path out of it, but all the other elements that we've invested over the years, 300,000 dollars in, in surveying and design and analysis, we, we believe that we don't want to throw that out and reinvent the wheel. We want to move the project forward minus the multi-use path, which was what the, the big issue was. By doing that, we can get the on-road bicycle accommodation, it's less onerous, because we're using local money as opposed to federal money.
Yeah.
So we don't lose parking, we keep and retain the parking, which was another big concern for those neighborhood meetings. But the long and short of it is, it's, it's a 3.1 million dollar project. It's a planning number, it's got, that's got a 20% contingency built in it. You know, when you, when you finish designing, you, you get into bid documents, you go out to bid and get the results back, the, you know, it could, it more than likely will be less than that. Those are FY 14 numbers.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they, every year, it gets delayed, you know, we, we're applying two and a half, three, 3% as a CPI escalator.
Potentially, it's maybe closer to 2.4, but, but it's somewhere between 2.4 and 3.
Could, could be, could be. Now, why are we bringing this forward? I've had this on the cap, you know, like I said, we've pursued outside sources for years, and, and I've included this in my capital plan request to the Capital Planning Committee. I, I, you know, I'm concerned that a, that we're asking the Board of Selectmen to do something and usurp the planning, the Capital Planning Committee's charge, which is to really look at all projects from a capital perspective and prioritize them and come in with something that makes sense. The reason why the, this particular citizen has asked the Selectmen to submit it, and, and I'm speaking on, on it, is that at Town Meeting last year, from the floor of Town Meeting, we did have citizens who stood up and spoke and said, "I don't want you to appropriate the Chapter 90 money unless you're putting it in Central Avenue," which was a 600,000 dollar number, which doesn't even begin to put a dent in it. So the promise to the, to the, to those people who spoke and to Town Meeting as a whole, as a body, was that we would come back, we would repackage this plan, and, and ask formally the Capital Planning Committee to, to make a recommendation and to re- committee to make a recommendation and to report back at the next town meeting. And I think this article was intended to do that.
Right. And clearly, I mean, everybody's in agreement that it's in deplorable condition, and something has to be done with it. The problem we have is when you try and fit three-point, well, let me back up a little bit. We've kind of, we have a formula, which we've kind of vetted out with the warrant committee and the capital committee, to try and maintain a level of debt service such that we're not eating into operating budgets by approving capital projects that have to be bonded and that, you know, that debt service has to be paid with, you know, tax levy dollars, you know, under the levy limit. And if you put on, if you put on too many capital projects, you're, you know, you're going to obviously be affecting. And this one is one of those that no matter what you do, if you put that $3.1 million in there, you've got to virtually take every other capital project out.
That's even recognizing that you can bond it for 20 years.
Right.
I mean, even fitting it down as much as you can, that's the impact.
Yeah, right, right. So something's got to be done. We don't know what or how at this point. You know, I agree, we have to have some recommendation for town meeting as to what we're going to do. I don't know if we can do it in sections, if that's feasible, if that's cost-effective to-
Certainly not cost-effective, and it is feasible.
Yep.
It's going to make it more costly.
More expensive, yeah.
And you could break it into pieces, you could. And please, nobody, in the end.
Yeah, understand, understand. Yeah, and there's no other temporary fixes that-
We've been-
Temporary fix-
We've been wasting pothole patch every year, but you have to make it passable in the wintertime, but the roadway base is so badly deteriorated that we're continuing to jump ton after ton after ton daily.
Right.
And of course, given the base, any sort of moisture, it just pumps right out.
And I'm sure every-
And the traffic that it sees.
Every year we wait, the base gets worse, and the project probably gets a little more costly because of deteriorating base. So-
So, Joe, you were saying if you had to grind up the existing road and replace it with two layers of asphalt?
Asphalt.
That's about 1.2, you said, isn't it?
Right. That's, which would include some curving work and the adjustment of the structures and the line painting and some sidewalk work. That's the 1.2.
Where did the balance come again? Did I miss that?
Well, but we wouldn't put it back in kind. There'd be realignments, there'd be signal improvements, there'd be refuge islands because of the wide expanse to allow the, particularly the school students, but even people, you know, who are going over to the recreation area of Turnus Pond, to, so all those elements to take that wide expanse and get halfway out and be able to stop it as traffic goes by, to then take the next step across. Now, all those, those refuge islands are happening in three locations, one at Brook itself, Central at Brook, one at Hinckley, and one up at Valley. And those are the main corridors where the kids need to come down, you know, to the school and to Turnus Pond.
Do you have to put those in?
They're the dangerous elements, sure. So, I mean, to replace it in kind with what's out there, which is, in some instances, as much as 47 feet of width in pavement, we would actually be pulling it down narrower, make the right-of-way. But the right-of-way would say, the actual travelway, we would make narrower, give it a little more green space with tree lawns, give them sidewalks that are far enough off the roadway. So we would actually be rebuilding the entire look, taking out the element of that multi-use path, but giving us the ability to keep the parking on the street, which was a big issue because of-
Right, but that's, you're talking major improvements here.
That's correct.
But if you're replacing it in kind, about 1.2 million?
About 1.2, which would include the sidewalks and the curb.
That would include new sidewalks.
And curbing, that's correct.
And curbing.
That's correct.
So what's wrong with doing that?
Basically-
You don't get the safety improvements that really exist.
But then I-
Right, right. There are some areas where there are not sidewalks at all. So by skip making the roadway a little bit narrower, it does give us room to put sidewalks in other areas where the rock outcroppings are, where there currently aren't sidewalks. Could, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Yeah. So, and I don't want to make it sound petty-wise and pompous, but the reality is too, is that over the, these last seven to 10 years, as the design has evolved, all the survey that they've done and all the designs that we've got in the can are working towards this goal to go back and put it back the way it is. It really, it would be throwing away that investment that the town has made over the years.
Okay.
And that's about $300,000.
Right. So one thing we could do is to revisit it on the capital committee, perhaps, and I think we can, because of the liberalization of the bonding lines, you could potentially go out to 40 years, I believe, on-
The life of the pavement is, you know, is 40 years, and whether the, whether the market would bear a 40-year bond or not is a separate issue, but that's something worth looking at for sure.
Right, because clearly, that would, that would reduce the debt service cost, the annual debt service cost. It would make the entire project more costly because you're going to be paying interest for a longer period of time, but, you know, so the total outlay becomes more because you're doing a 40-year bond as opposed to a 20-year bond. But, but it may, you know, if we can figure out some ways to cut the cost down a little more, we may be able to squeeze something in.
Absolutely. I mean, right off the bat, like I said, there's a 20% contingency built into that number.
Right.
Right off the bat, that's $600,000.
Are these your, is this what you came up with?
Our engineering staff, our-
Your engineers?
I, the department, yeah. But we're working with our, the consultant who had been working with us as we were pursuing the federal-
So we actually have plans for the, right, there is a design-
That's correct.
A full design for that.
Then our construction, you know, construction, bidding documents, something you can build, but the design, you know, Mass Highway calls them 25%-
Yep.
...design plan that you can take to a public hearing and be able to get people to participate.
Yep.
Those are in place. Actually, I have those with me this evening, copies of them.
So that price does not include design, right?
It does not, at this point-
Design is all done.
Well, that's correct. At this point, the bid documents, we would put out ourselves, because we're not using federal highway money, we're not using state money. If we're losing our local, our own local money, we have a lot more control. The reason why we can do away with the bike lane is because it's no longer using federal money. So, but that was the tail wagging the dog, is this project is being as costly as it was, that there was, you know, my predecessors, not a criticism, but the truth, that they knew that they couldn't get this thing funded locally to do it the right way. So they started pursuing outside funding sources. So once they got to the point of saying, "Let's use federal money," the state established a program that was called Footprint Roads. In other words, if you can confine your project within the confines of the existing footprint, make it narrower, and the things that we're talking about, if you can confine it within there, it just slid right through real fast. It was so successful, the state did away with it. And when the state did away with it, we-
Spent too much money.
Just spent, exactly, because everybody came in with their wonderful projects that everyone could do, and they just had no more money to do it with. So the result was, it left only the tip, the Transportation Improvement Plan, which duels our federal highway money into communities through the Regional Planning Agency. And once you get that federal highway money, the bidding, the design, the types of material, and so instead of four inches of pavement, you have to use six inches of pavement, it just becomes ridiculous. It drives the price way, way, way up.
You said part of that roadway doesn't have sidewalks, is that correct, though?
Part of it doesn't. It's Valley down to school-
Up by Ruggles.
Up by Ruggles and school, that area, on the Westley side, doesn't, on the same-
Is there room for, is there room for a sidewalk there?
There is room. If we were, if we were to do ourselves a duel with the bike path, we could pull that roadway down and squeeze a sidewalk in on both sides.
We have a very big right-of-way there. That right-of-way is huge. We could slow the traffic down on that road, too, by taking out some of that, the big winding curves and narrow it in, which is in those 25%, well, yeah, 25% plan, shows that it's a narrower road, narrower travel lanes. We probably should move on a little bit, otherwise we're never going to get done tonight. But needless to say, that we do have to have further discussion about that. The next article is the Selectman article. It's just housekeeping again, discharging the senior senate building committee, the IT committee, and the recreational facilities committee, which are all basically inactive committees at this point. I'm not even sure what the recreational facilities committee is, to be honest, but-
It was the former Article 38 committee that was established back in 1977.
Okay.
The land up by Brooks Field.
Okay, okay. I understand. And IT committee, I mean, there probably is merit to an IT committee, but right now it's inactive.
We're going to have the-
We will have recommendations coming out of the government study committee, and, you know, if there are recommendations for a re-establishment of it, then we can deal with it then. Twenty-three, I think, is one that we probably have to think more about and maybe deal with in October, is the recasting of the audit committee as a Board of Selectman committee under an amended bylaw as opposed to an appointed, you know, as opposed to a Selectman-appointed committee.
Town moderator-appointed committee.
A moderator, yeah, okay. That it would, the problem isn't how it's appointed, the problem is the function of an audit committee. Right now, we have an audit committee that really doesn't do an awful lot. They take a look at the audit report at the end of the year, but aren't very proactive during the year. I'm not even sure how many members are on that committee.
Three.
Just three members. If you look at what the government finance officers' reports are on recommendations of what an audit committee should be, their role is significantly more than just reviewing the audit report when it comes back at the end of the year, that, you know, that they're involved in, integrally involved in internal controls over financial reporting, in risk assessment, in a lot of, in dealing with the auditors, in the actual planning phase of the audit. And they're actually a committee that's more or less an oversight committee, that's looking at your, the controls in place to make sure that the financial statements that we produce are accurate, to make sure that, you know, that there's, you know, proper controls over safeguarding of assets, and taking a look at perhaps laws and regulations, and to make sure we have controls, to make sure that we're not violating laws and regulations, you know, those kinds of things. So I think a lot more, and there are, all you got to do is Google it, and there's, you know, study after study of what an audit committee is that goes 40 and 50 pages long. Amber's got some of them now.
That's right.
So, yeah, I think this is probably one better for the fall, after we've had a chance to kind of-
Really bet it.
Yeah, bet it out and think of what it should be, because clearly, the more responsibility you give it, the more sophisticated that committee has to be. I mean, you can't have just a bunch of residents that don't understand, you know, general accepted accounting principles, and what auditing standards are, and, you know, and what internal controls are, and how to assess risk, and how to set a proper control environment, and, you know, there's all, just all kinds of things that come into play. So, you know, for that reason, I think we probably should defer it for a while. And the final one is the Selectman's appropriation for FY 13 Reserve Fund, and this is just to, we believe that we're going to have a public safety improvement that is going to be necessary, that will probably have to be funded by the reserve fund, and there may not be sufficient funds in there to do it. So should that occur, we're going to need a mechanism to replenish the reserve fund, and that's what this article does.
I've got a procedural question.
Yes.
Can we vote on the 14 articles that we submitted as one motion, or do we need to start talking about them individually?
Let me just get back up to the top again. Do we have a motion up there or not?
Do you want to let Joe and Bill go?
Yeah, I think we can.
Thank you very much.
Go home.
I wish I could say the same for you.
Bye-bye. Where were we? I guess we don't have, I think we could, except if we want to defer the audit committee, that probably should be under a separate motion to defer it. But the rest of them, I guess we probably could make a motion to approve the Selectman articles and, where are they again? Get back up to the top.
Do you want to just see the numbers or-
Yeah, by number, I think we could do that. Just looking for them again. Don't tell me any warrant articles. So how would we word that motion on the Selectman ones?
To approve for inclusion in the 2013 annual town meeting warrant, the following articles submitted by the Board of-
Board of Selectmen, okay. So to, okay, so what was adding to approve for, a motion to approve for-
To approve for inclusion-
Inclusion.
...in the 2013 annual town meeting warrant, the following articles-
Articles.
...submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so that is the motion. And it would be article number, and I'm just going to use the numbers, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 13, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 24. So that is-
Second.
Okay. So motion been made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Now, the ones that are non-Selectman, the motion would be-
Vote to approve the following articles for inclusion in the 2013 annual town meeting warrant.
Okay, so make a motion to include the following articles in the 2013 annual town warrant, and they would be articles number one, two, four, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 18? And that's it, yes.
Second.
Okay, motion been made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Yep.
On 23, are we just leaving it out?
Twenty-three, we'll deal with that separately, just to defer it, I think.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, and finally, a motion to defer until the October town meeting. I guess it's the October annual town meeting or-
October annual town meeting.
The article on recasting the audit committee as a Board of Selectman committee under amended bylaws.
Second motion.
Motion been made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay.
I'm an ease for Mia.
You, Mr. Early.
I know. Okay, so this is approval of nominations for Meyer Elections, which is the Massachusetts Insurance, what's the-
Interlocal Insurance Association.
Insurance Association, who has a Board of Directors and has various committees, and this is elections, basically authorizing me to vote at the, at Mia's, Meyer's annual meeting for various positions, and there's, I think there's six, there's two sets of three nominations, I believe, isn't there?
Yes. The two separate committees, it's one for the- Interlocal Insurance Association, the other one's for the- One's for the property and casualty. One's for the property and casualty group, and one's for the inter-local insurance association.
Okay. Basically, all we need is a motion to authorize the chair to vote in January at the Meyer Annual Conference, but in the Meyer Board of Directors meeting.
Yes.
So moved.
Motion been made, second. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's see, that's, 14, 15 is the No Place For Hate proclamation, which is a proclamation that gets read every year at the Mount Luther King Celebration. It's January 21st this year, Mount Luther King Day, at the Concord Baptist Church, and I would read the proclamation, and am I going to read it now, or just give it the authorization to...
You need to vote to approve and sign the proclamation.
Okay, so basically, a motion to approve and sign a proclamation for the No Place For Hate to be read at the celebration, the Mount Luther King Celebration.
Celebration.
Second motion.
Motion been made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a reserve fund transfer request from the police department, and basically, this is to approve and forward to the warrant committee a reserve fund request for the police department in the amount of $150,000 for the install, installation of a bidirectional amplifiers in Milton High School and the Pierce School.
Second motion.
Okay, motion been made, second, any further discussion?
Just a question on that.
Sure.
Should that motion include subject to approval of town council?
No, town council normally doesn't approve reserve fund transfer requests, so, yeah, I don't think we need it. I mean, you could put it in there, but I guess we're going to ask a question of town council, but I don't, I don't see it as, but I'll accept as a friendly amendment, if you want.
No, I'll take my comment back.
Okay, okay. So motion been made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And I will entertain...
Move to adjourn.
Motion adjourned. Okay, second.
See if he gets a second.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
I'm going home anyway.
Okay, I adjourn.